He changed the numbers.
He changed the number?
Yeah. And then he will still list. We all set? I'd like to call to work, special meeting, Board of Finance, Thursday, June fifth. Join me for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand is one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we changed the order. Okay, next up is public comments. And please step up. Keep your comments to three minutes and we will let this go on for roughly thirty minutes. Anybody ready? Come on.
Hi, my name is Shannon Turner. I live at Spice Hill Drive. First, I want to thank everybody for the hard work that they have to do to make this budget work. Work for us, excuse me, for hard decisions, for crunching numbers and the resources to accomplish the wishes of the voters in our town. I hope you keep in mind that this referendum drew out an unprecedented amount of voters and consider what they said with their vote. Residents want to be able to afford living in East Hampton. And our property taxes are becoming dangerously high. Our town voted no, and we expect to see the budget significantly reduced. Take taking into account that we're already very close to a forty mil rate, which makes East Hampton the twenty first most expensive state town in the state. I think that we should see no more than a three percent overall budget increase. That includes education in town, no more than three percent. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Eric Peterson, Tarsha Road. I also would like to thank all of you, whether we agree or not, it's a lot of work and time that you put in, and I think people forget that even though you were elected, these are volunteer positions, so thank you for that. I also want to repeat what you just said, that I think the three percent is is more than enough. There's very few people in town, I believe, that got more than three percent in their own cost of living increase. Including many seniors, I personally have lost, you know, friends and family that had to leave town because they could not afford to keep the homes that they've had for generations, some of them, because the taxes have just gotten outrageous. And having seen some of the things that go on in the school system, I don't know that it's new dollars they need, but new leadership to run those dollars. Thank you.
Hi, I also want to thank you all for trying to create a budget that best serves everyone in East Hampton. My name is Madeline Daniels, and I'm a rising senior at East Hampton High School. Of course, as students are all here regarding the outcomes of the budget cuts voted on last week or this week. For the past two days, in every classroom, hallway, bathroom, and lunch table, conversations have been filled all about these cuts and worries about what next year might look like without some of our most important teachers, particularly one who is actually my homeroom teacher, and I've grown to know very well. To some of you sitting here today, cutting one teacher from the English department may be simply a statistic, but my goal in speaking here is to change that and convey to everyone here the legitimate outcomes that this cut may have on us students. I'm actually, you know, in a teacher who is at risk for being cut's homeroom, which has allowed me to get to know her very well and see what impact teachers have in all facets of our school. It is evident that our teachers are extremely involved and important in making East Hampton High School what it is. This one teacher I'm talking about is actually the class of twenty twenty six advisor, the NHS advisor, the Save Promise Club advisor, as well as an AP Ling, a high high school level English class teacher, as well as teaching English classes across all grade levels. As the class vice president under her, I have learned so much about what it means to be a leader, a community member, a student, and really a person. She connects with students of all kinds and really has made an impact in our school. I remember just one day as a freshman when she pulled me aside after pulling up my Power School on her computer, telling me how impressed she was seeing what my grades looked like and how she knew I was capable of doing so much in my high school career. Being seen by a teacher in this way and feeling that someone was standing in my corner rooting for me was a big part of what has made me who I am today, growing me from a once insecure freshman to a confident and active member in the community, largely as a result of her investment in me as a student. This is something that is unmatched. Beyond this, our teachers are involved in so many of our high school programs, logistically making the school what it is. We have things like NHS, Save Promise Club, simply our class officer and advisor events such as senior events like the DC trip going on next year. Without these, without teachers in these positions, they can't run. These teachers can be replaced, but the experience and personal craft that this one teacher has brought to seamlessly running each of these programs cannot be. All in all, our teachers' influence has been unmeasurable to myself and many other students, and cutting our teachers has a far larger impact beyond the budget, but directly on each of us students. If tax cuts are needed, please don't cut our teachers.
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm William Faber, forty five Schoolhouse Lane. Dear members of the board, the people have spoken, and the unofficial numbers suggest a result in the manner of support for cuts to education. I cannot speak on behalf of the voters, and I cannot speak on behalf of those who have to pay taxes to the town. However, I was elected to speak on behalf of my peers. My name again is Will Faber, and I'm the president of the class of twenty twenty six and the president of the National Honor Society Chapter at East Hampton High School, and hold leadership positions in over fourteen other school-based organizations, some of which are unfortunately being reduced. Therefore, I feel it is my duty to thank the members of the board for their support to education and point out the lasting impact continued financial reductions can have on East Hampton students. Budget cuts are, of course, inevitable. However, the extent of their magnitude is indelible, not only to the functioning of schools, but also to the students who are directly impacted by the decision. Each year, the town of East Hampton takes pride in its top ten students and scholarship recipients. However, when the time is presented to support and put in extended effort to make these students truly first class, sometimes things can go the other way. The pictures on the board of the library of our top ten students are the reward for living in a town that values and supports its educational system, even when it gets tough to do so. Budget cuts have presented the possibility of losing the class of twenty twenty six advisor and my advisor to National Honor Society. Replacements have not been presented, and in order for me to deliver my peers and friends a successful and memorable senior year along with all its opportunities, as I was elected to do, I need some more support. Nobody in this room I understand wants budget or staff cuts. However, I bring this point up to paint the picture of the inevitable loss that affects us students when large budget reductions on education are proposed. Recent cuts have eliminated AP opportunities along with all acting and drama classes. Cuts have also discontinued the fall play at East Hampton High School, which just last week won best performance out of the whole state of Connecticut during the Halo Awards. These opportunities that were granted to me at East Hampton are part of the reason I decided to stay a bell ringer, even though I was prompted to go to private school. Voting is important, and the people of East Hampton have presented their discontent with the current financial situation, and I understand this. However, I plead with you to look elsewhere when thinking about financial reductions. My classmates cannot vote, and we do not have the kind of say to swing elections. However, we come before the Board of Finance to request that you're to use your influence to continue acknowledging the importance of education in our town and to rethink forthcoming cuts to the education budget. Although we don't have direct say, we are directly impacted. Thank you very much for your time and your service to the town.
Thank you.
Hi, Juliana Sensigalli from fifty three Walnut Ave. I'm a graduating senior this year, and without the classes like public speaking, which is gonna get cut, or the acting classes, we would have in more class sizes, we will not have the same relationship with our teachers, which would make high school really hard. Like for me, for my class sizes, there are already twenty three students per class, and I wouldn't have gotten to have like a good relationship with most of my teachers, who I will still stay in touch with and are some of my inspirations, who are getting cut, and that's just like sad. Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Beth Vickery, eight Viola Drive. Education is a human industry, a service from people to people. Tonight, I ask you to keep that in mind as you make your budget recommendations. Since Dr. Van Tassel's original proposal, over one million dollars has already been cut from the Board of Education's budget. This week's referendum reflects that many in our town support further reductions, but I urge you to reduce with care. Our seventeen hundred school-aged children cannot vote in referendums, but they live with the consequences. Alongside the twelve hundred residents who supported the budget, they represent a different kind of mandate, one for thoughtful, measured decision-making. You've said the Board of Finance doesn't cut staff, only numbers. But now, all that's left are staff. Even before this week's vote, six teaching and two paraeducator positions had been cut for next year. These are not numbers, they're people. They're the frontline heroes who support the whole child. Every fraction of a percent in cut means more losses, four hundred thousand dollars per percent. That's another teacher, another relationship, and another support system gone. While I don't support additional cuts, I recognize that the community voted for some reduction. Still, I ask you, do not slash, do not overcut. Find a balanced, reflective middle ground. I ask you to consider a modest and measured cut, no more than point five percent. That's still a significant sacrifice, two hundred thousand dollars, but one that honors both the will of the voters and the needs of our students. Anything deeper will directly impact the people, the teachers, paraeducators, and support staff, who are the heart of our schools. A typical teacher spends over one thousand one hundred hours with students in a year, guiding, supporting, and shaping their development. For working families, meaningful parent-child often time often adds up to less than that during the school year. That does not diminish the role of parents, it's to underscore how vital teachers are in the daily lives of our children. They are more than educators, they are mentors, role models, and steady adults in a child's life. When we reduce staff, we not we're not just cutting jobs, we're taking away relationships, relationships and consistency our children depend on. East Hampton should be proud of its schools, its senior center, its shared values. But Tuesday's vote suggests we're turning away from what makes our tongue our town strong, caring for one another. Let's not forget who we are. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Everybody on Zoom? Everybody on Zoom?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening, this is Brian Turner, Spice Hill Drive. First, I just want to thank all the East Hampton taxpayers who came out in record numbers to vote on the budget referendum. And I really hope we continue to see voter participation grow into the future like we did this week, it was amazing. I also want to thank the members of the Board of Finance who now have the important job of listening to the will of the people who overwhelmingly voted for less spending and by extension, less taxes. You now have a difficult and thankless job. You're gonna be gonna be pulled in different directions tonight, as you already saw, by people making public comments. It's understandable, it's a very emotional topic. But what really matters is what the taxpaying voters have asked for with their votes. The numbers indicate more affordable budget increases are required by the people. These will not be cuts, as people keep saying, just more affordable increases over last year's budget. I hope you take that message to heart and put forth a combined town and education budget that keeps us below forty mils and keeps the overall increase at or below three percent in total. Lastly, now is the time for voters on both sides of the aisle to reach across and send a unified message to Hartford to let them know that they must properly fund their mandates and stop expecting the middle class to pick up their slack. Let's not make the taxpaying voters our enemies, let's demand more from Hartford, and let's let them know it's time for change. Thank you, Board of Finance members, we're really counting on you tonight to do what the voters have called for. Have a great night, guys. Thank you.
We're just waiting.
You're on, go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, sorry, Rebecca Harvey, Flanders Road. I don't envy the position that any of you are in. I think you're putting a very difficult one, however, I think the way that the vote turned out a couple days ago shows you what the taxpayers are begging you for, which is a significant reduction, keeping the mil rate well under forty percent. I don't know what that entails or what you have to do. I'm hearing three percent coming out, anything from there or lower, I think is fair. I, you know, hate that this is impacting so many different people. But it's impacting the seniors, the renters, the small businesses, the single-family homes, and, you know, everybody else. And I really hope that you guys are able to do what you can, keep those numbers as low as possible. And I appreciate you all. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments? Okay, move on. We'll start with you guys, comments regarding budget?
Oh, yeah, I'll start. What I I understand what the voters did, and I understand, you know, how the Board of Education bought but seemed to have a lot of pushback from the taxpayers. But what I do note is superintendent's not here, and I'm reluctant to do just plain percentage.
He's here, Ben. He's here.
Oh, that never, oh, good. Anyway, because I want to hear some suggestions first off from him, you know, about some percentage, he, somebody raised like three percent or something. But I would like to find out what the actual impact, and also with Mr. Cox. What is the impact of some things, some reductions? And that's all, I just want to, I want to know the impact of it before I vote on anything.
Yeah, so I, first off, thank you for, Mr. Cox over there, for giving us some suggestions to work off of. You know, I appreciate taking a look at that. It's a tough position, right, especially with respect to education. We're at a point where further cuts mean further people. And so, you know, at least on that front, it's going to be very hard for me to sit here and say, yes, we should continue to cut the education budget. Those people are very important to the kids and for what, you know, the future of the town. And so, you know, I'm gonna be hard pressed on any reductions there. I recognize, I hear what the voters have said, we need to do something there. But we need to be mindful of the how deep we're cutting there. It's tough for for the students, and so, you know, I would appreciate some feedback if we can have Mr. Van Tassel talk or Dr. Van Tassel talk at some point. But, you know, I have some numbers that have been tossed around. Be interested to understand what those translate to and impacts against the numbers that have been tossed around.
Yeah, and I did want to clarify, probably for everyone in the room, that with the Board of Finance and working with Jeff, we actually, in in their operating budget, had been that reading program. We actually did fund that, so that is really not in the picture anymore, we we use surplus. So, and the other thing to be mindful of is we are looking at a deficit spending in this current year budget of oh, probably over six hundred thousand. And that has to be, you know, taken into consideration as well. It's in the forefront, you know, we added eight hundred thousand last year, and I think the year before was three hundred thousand. Three hundred thousand.
I understand.
Yeah. Now, I mean, do you have specific, I mean, I think there was an outline from the superintendent where certain amounts of money, it demonstrated what he felt needed to be reduced. And you have to remember, we don't, we cannot touch any line items.
I understand.
So it's completely up to them.
I understand.
Where they, where they decide to make changes in the budget.
Appreciate that it's their choice on how they choose to manage the reduction that we propose.
Right, right.
Oh, quick question, that would be the Board of Education would be the one about, it's just not left to the superintendent. The Board of Education would work with the superintendent to implement the cuts, correct?
Right, I mean, ultimately, the Board of Education is is the like manager of the superintendent.
I just want to make sure that the people are doing whatever, implementing whatever cuts are coming, that the Board of Education's doing it, not this stuff.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Mr. Van Tassel is just out there willy-nilly, I don't think.
I just wanted, so everybody kind of knew that.
Yeah.
He's not just arbitrarily cutting whatever.
And he's coming to the front of the room.
Thank you.
I want to be able to answer any of the questions that you do have.
Anything?
Probably should go to your own land before we ask them.
If we get initial comments out, and then we'll start talking about where we like numbers.
Okay, I don't have any questions, I mean, we've met on numerous occasions. And I've also had communication with Augie as well.
Well, I don't have anything. Just as far as the Board of Education is concerned, with the turnout at the referendum, it's the largest turnout that I have ever seen for a referendum, thirty four percent. Is amazing. And I think we have to pay attention to what the voters said, we have to pay attention to that message, we have to not make token actions, but meaningful, to tell the voters that we have listened. I feel that the town's budget was very well done, I think the, and I've said this before, the administrators, the department heads, Mr. Cox, Jeff Schulka, you know, all had did a great job developing, helping us develop that budget. And so that's gonna be, but that was also voted down, as we know, by a hundred votes, so we also have to be mindful of that. That's all I have.
I mean, I'm pretty much in favor of the taxpayer and how the the vote turned out and looking at it from, you know, my corporate world of of working, you know, there's deductions and transfers and different situations that come up, and you have to roll with what the the revenue is, and you'll be in favor of any cuts that are, you know, potentially needed, downsizing, shifting responsibilities, regionalizing, all that stuff. And I'm pretty much in favor of what the the taxpayers have voted on a couple of days ago.
The Board of Education budget, the current crisis is due to the fact that the Board of Education has refused to recognize the declining enrollment of hundreds of students over the last years and take meaningful action to address that. And it's all come to a head at the present time. It is something we need to address.
Okay, you're up.
I too got the memorandum from the manager in there. I looked through some things here that, like a contingency, twenty thousand dollars is all right to cut, according to him. Eighteen thousand for assistant fire marshal, that means that they won't get as many inspections in buildings, restaurants, and so on, because they won't have an assistant. But I would say we can, we can squeeze that out. Eight, that's eighteen thousand, so I got thirty two, I got thirty eight thousand so far just in the town budget. There's some other ones that I am not in favor of cutting. Planning and zoning. We're growing, there's a lot of building around town, and I think we should have a strong planning and zoning. So I don't, I wouldn't reduce that ten thousand dollars. There's a twenty seven thousand dollar item for police pistols. The chief of police at one of our meetings told us that the the guns were something like seven, eight years old, and
Ted, can I stop you there? They're still gonna be purchased. The town manager has suggested that they they're purchased with surplus in the police department's budget.
Well.
So, yeah, we would.
It looks like that that was a cut of twenty seven thousand dollars.
It's it's a prevalent of that reading program. It's not, it's not there, we're paying for it outside, outside of.
If that's the case, then I I I'm glad, because pistols, brand-new pistols are a morale factor for our police department. If if the other guns start misfiring or don't fire at all in a bad situation, it would not be good.
Right.
The bleachers in the middle school. If you sit on the bleachers there and get up, you might have a piece of wood in your butt. You know why? Because the bleachers are that bad. Are we gonna cut the bleachers over there? Or you're gonna pay for it next year or the year after, you know, pretty soon, it's gonna be a sickening cycle.
Well, I can tell you this, that we have talked about the bleachers, and I don't want that ninety thousand cut for the bleachers. And we want to leave it in, is kind of where I think, because it is the kind of thing that that's gonna be even more money next year, even if we just leave forty five thousand. It could be that we need another sixty, seventy, eighty thousand.
Pay me now or pay me later.
Right, so. And and I do know, and I want to kind of test to the And, and I do know, and I wanna kind of attest to the fact that those bleachers are very old, very old.
And then my last one is the laptops. I just hope that the laptops that they have are up to date. And I, I guess we could cut those for, I guess it's going three thousand four hundred. So. I'm not sure, what I, what I just said, it equates to what I'm gonna say now. I think the cuts, my personal view, board add from five percent to four fifty, four and a half percent. That's probably teachers going out the door. I know the town voted, the, down these, at the referendum, down both of these. But four fifty is, is my, my really best offer. And the town from three point six two to three point two five. Now, I don't know if that, those, those percentages equate to under forty mils or not. I would, I would love to know that, but that's my idea of what I think the town will vote for. And I think if, if we cut tonight, I think, I, I hope that the word gets out to all voters. Again, they have a good turnout and look at these numbers and I hope they vote for it. It's, it's a shame to start cutting too much. That's, I don't know if that's cut too much or not, that's my idea.
I think we've all spoken.
Yeah, I mean. We have, we have really, we've gone over numbers, gone over numbers. And then with the referendum failing large as it did. I think it's been said that, you know, they're looking for something substantial. You know, I mean, we've said it over and over, there's no, really no point in saying it again. But every household has cut their budget back. And if we get too crazy in town, you know, we always say, and you being economic development. You're not gonna attract business if you've got a crazy mill rate. You're not. And you could actually lose business. You know, get a new business coming in and a year later, they've got a significant tax increase. And of course, we have to consider the reavow. I know Windsor Locks, my hometown, they just failed their budgets. And because with the reavow, they were hit this, this, for this coming budget year. They were facing a thirty percent increase in their taxes. So, and I, you know, I don't understand, but that was the I mean, some of the houses in Windsor Locks, they're, they're, they would be called starter homes, most of them. Going from, you maybe would have paid two hundred thousand, they're coming in at three and a half, three fifty. So, I mean, that is also gonna be, we don't know what reavow is gonna do to us. But when you see how today, you look at it. Reavow is gonna hurt because of way the
Just a quick thought on the reavow, because it's others will go down because it's what the taxpayers vote for is gonna be the bottom line, that doesn't change. So individually, it may change.
Right. With that.
On the grand list.
And, and the other thing is, we do get hit with that, the the, the issue with the automobile tax. They redid the calculation and that was a loss of revenue to the town. And making that up.
That was a significant hit.
It was.
Significant hit.
I think, if I remember correctly, it was right, right around twenty-four million.
In the reduction in the value, yes, about twenty-three million, the loss of revenue associated with that is about seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, that's a hit.
That alone is worth, I think, close to two mils, if I ran my numbers right.
Exactly, yeah, so.
Well, the other things that are, that are new on the in the town budget is the ambulance. And we have an agreement with the ambulance association. And so there, a hundred and eight thousand in the budget this year. And we felt that was important. And the roads, people have been crying for years about the roads. And so we've started a plan last year where we gave Public Works seven hundred thousand to work on the roads. Each year it's increased, this year it's seven hundred seventy-five thousand. And by twenty thirty, our Public Works Director says that he will have repaired all the roads in town and they'll be at the maintenance level. And so that's another thing that has increased our taxes. So just to let you know, and then the automobile tax. So some of the things that are, have come up this year that needed, needed paying for, needed doing, and that's in the town budget.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the to recommend for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Town general government budget in the amount of nineteen million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty. With the following provisions. That line item zero one one two zero 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 zero, the contingency line item. Be reduced by twenty thousand to the level at which it was funded in the recent past. Second line item, one zero two two zero two two three. The fire marshal, the salary for the deputy fire marshal, be reduced by eighteen thousand. Third, line item zero one four, one zero 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 zero. The building, planning and zoning, the other professional services line item, be reduced by ten thousand dollars. And that this motion be sent to the town council.
Second. Any questions? Anyone comment?
What's the mill rate? What's the, what's the reduction?
Excuse me?
I'm coming with a different total.
Okay. Is that what you gave me, the sheet you gave me?
I have to double check the, the sheet I gave you. But those, the cumulative amount of those three cuts to the operating portion of the budget is fourteen million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred forty-four. You had in debt, three hundred and eighty-two, six thirty-six. And sixty-eight thousand dollars on reductions, capital. Those sixty-eight thousands would be twenty-seven thousand dollars for weapons. And then forty-one thousand dollars for technology. That leaves us with a total total government budget of nineteen million, seven ninety-six, seven hundred.
Could you repeat that number, Jeff?
Oh, it was nineteen million, seven ninety-six, seven eighty. And again, sixty-eight thousand dollar reduction in capital. And a forty-eight thousand dollar reduction on the town operations side.
I'd like to amend my motion to reflect the changes in the, in the numbers, please.
Second. Go ahead. Any, any discussion, comments?
You just, what's the net percentage increase as a result of those cuts?
The increase on the operation, on the town operations side is three point three eight. Then the factor in capital and debt for the total town government is four point five one.
I couldn't hear that, say that again, please. Thank you.
That was capital and debt included, is that correct?
What, what percentage decreases?
What's your question?
Trying to figure out what the percentage reduction is from the original. I think the town budget was very tight. Very tight.
I agree with you, Ted.
We didn't, this, this is what, what the town manager is recommending, you were not in their class burn. And I, I do trust his judgment on what he can, he can live without.
We'll give you that in just one second.
Yeah, cause I was thinking, what's the, the bottom number that is going down? That's gonna end up in the paper, so.
Math would say that's a point five eight percent reduction.
Their budget did come in really lean, I mean, they eliminated a position. The, the only increase that, what we added to the budget in, for the last referendum was for the parts and driver. For the scenes. And that's still in there.
I'd be very reluctant to give that up.
I don't want, I don't wanna touch that.
They pay a lot in town and they get very little services, the least we could do is give them a bustle.
Yeah, so I, that is, that is still in. Okay.
So put very simply, this is basically capturing most of the recommendations that were provided to us with the exception of
Of the
bleachers.
Right, we wanted the bleachers to stay in, because they're, that, that's an item that, they're expensive, ninety thousand this year.
This is a liability, a risk there.
Yes.
It's the, the older they get, you know, I don't know if it's gonna increase the insurance. But each passenger, there's a, an increased risk of injury.
And the other, the other piece is, my understanding is they have to use like five people to, to close them up. And the other thing is, we don't want that floor ruined. We ruined the floor playing with the old bleachers, now we've done even bigger expense. So, I think we all agree on that.
Yes. So the proposal, just to, to be clear, was to, to take, cut half of it and push that to next year, you're working to
No, we're leaving the whole nine.
No, no, I understand, I'm just looking back at the original proposal that we provided.
Yes, that's what they were.
To push it by one year.
Yeah.
And do half now, half later.
Yeah, and we had
I understand they're not in good shape, but
Yeah.
The concern is that next year it's gonna be a bigger quote, just because things are getting more expensive.
Right. And, and even those more technology, the laptops, they've been doing a pretty good job of having a really good recycling plant. So we haven't seen that they come into capital with this like, holy, how can we afford this? They, they've really gotten into a pretty good rhythm, so I do trust their
How, how long do we keep our laptops for? What's the, the turnover?
They could be on anywhere from five to six years.
Yeah, which is, which is pretty good. You know, for the taxpayers.
Yeah. About all you can get out of a laptop, though.
Yeah. So, we have the motion, it's been seconded. Take the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It was everyone. Went across the aisle.
Thank you, Mr.
On that at least.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion on capital improvements.
There are second?
Well, he hasn't done it, so.
Oh. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a
I was trying to get it, I don't want to.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital improvement plan in the amount of one million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. This would include using, use of sinking funds and other revenue sources and contingent on transfer from the general fund of current taxes in the amount of one million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. And removed from the capital plan is the twenty-seven thousand dollars for the weapons, cause we talked about paying that on a surplus. Deferring the laptops of seventeen, seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars. And removing the alertis equipment from the capital plan.
I'll second.
This right here. This is their recommendation to us.
Oh, okay, alright, very good. Okay.
Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'd like to make a motion to recommend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five Board of Education budget as recommended by the Board of Finance in the amount of thirty-eight million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Second.
Can, can you repeat that number, please?
Thirty-eight million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars.
What percentage is that now? What, what percentage is that?
It's a
From the five percent.
Two point seven five.
The two point seven five increase.
Well.
From five.
It's a decrease. It's taken away.
Two point seven five, correct.
They're taking away one and a quarter percent relative to where we were.
There would be a three point seven five increase?
No, two point seven five.
Two point seven five increase.
And, and we started with five percent, they're cutting it in half?
Well.
Not quite, I guess.
We started with six point nine four, that's where we really started. And actually, before that, seven point three.
I got a
Where's that equate to in money?
One billion, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars above what was approved last year.
If I could have a question, where did that number come from?
Well, we took, look at enrollment, that's, that's a big driver.
Okay, no, what I was getting at is to know exactly what the impact is. And I was gonna ask, was that the superintendent giving you that number, does he know what the impact is gonna be? For all the folks that know here, you know, when they go out and vote again, what are they voting on that was cut? And this
That, that will come out when the Board of Ed digest the numbers and, and that will come out.
This whole package results in a mill rate of under forty, forty mils.
So that was the goal, to keep it under forty.
That's one of our goals.
Part of it, that's part of it.
Okay, so we really don't know this going to, at three point but two point seven five, we don't know the impact, what it's gonna be on the school system, do we?
It, it, they decide what they're gonna impact.
Well, I know, but there's gonna be an impact. I don't know what it is.
Absolutely.
So I'm kind of reluctant to vote for something, I have no idea what it is, why not one point two?
You can make a motion for that.
Okay, no, no, I just, I wanna, sorry, the point is, is I don't understand how we could vote when we don't know what the impact is. That's just my personal opinion. And you probably get a pretty good idea how I'm gonna vote on this, cause I have no idea what it means.
Well.
So it turns over a million dollars?
What's that?
Is this motion to cut, is this over a million dollars?
Yes.
It's an increase, it's an increase of a billion dollars.
Can you?
Yeah.
Any comments?
Really can't have comments at this point, we'll give people time, you know, when we are done with this. What we're saying is you had thirty, thirty-seven million dollar budget last year. And we are, that is the increase that we are giving them a million.
Where's that, a million what?
One million, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
So by my calculations, about eight hundred and fifty So by my calculations, about an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction relative to the five percent that was proposed in the last budget.
And what was rejected by the taxpayers.
I understand that's what was rejected by the taxpayers. I'm just, the numbers are about eight hundred and fifty thousand.
It's a tough number, I get that. Um. But, you know, I, I, you know, this, the decline in enrollment didn't just happen. Today. It's been ongoing since. Twenty twenty one. And just in the last year, March of twenty four to March of twenty five. The enrollment reduction was seventy students. That's significant. So. We, we just can't keep putting millions and millions in. We, we, we can't afford it.
At a class size of twenty, that's about three, three, I know it doesn't work that way, but it, it.
Right.
And we've already, are.
You know.
Been at order of magnitude for reduction. Based on the five percent.
And, you know, I, I do think. That, um, Tim is, is looking for cost saving measures, in fact. Think they're looking to share services. Uh, because Karen is retiring. So, I mean, they are looking for other cost savings, and I give them, I give them a big, real credit for that. But we have to be doing that.
I think our enrollment peaked. At one point to around two thousand students. We're at seventeen hundred now. And our budget is almost doubled of, from that time. Of the peak enrollment. That should have been addressed.
Is it possible to, to have a little bit of commentary from Dr. Tassel, just to, to help kind of frame that, what that? Type of a number means?
Sure.
Uh, thank you, uh, for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I do once again recognize the challenge that the Board of Finance is faced with as it relates to. Uh, the budget, and we certainly, uh, as, as a follow up to. Uh, what did happen at the referendum, uh, voices were heard, and we had wanted to make sure that voices were there. And that voices could be heard, and it was an historic turnout, so certainly. The outcome of that is at the direction that we are being asked to make further reductions to the budget. I just want to share with you all that in terms of those next steps, I have made it very clear. In my communications with members of the Board of Finance, with leadership of the Town Council, Board of Finance, Board of Ed, that we will and. Work together towards a better outcome for the finances of this school district. I have come into a district where you are correct in stating there was a deficit, a deficit that had been building for years. I can't reverse that trend, but I am committed to making changes to try to reverse that trend. I appreciate Cher bringing up the point of, we have approached the town to do a shared service model. For the financial, uh, elements relevant to the district and removing the business manager. We are working very closely to try to mitigate the deficit through other measures that we have incorporated this year. I will tell you that, uh, the shift to the high deductible health plan has saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, albeit it was never the intention to remove people. Out of the health insurance for the district, but this turnover was significant to that. That would all been a factor of some of the change that we have wanted to do. What I have asked and I pleaded for is to give me a chance to do the work that I can do for this community. In trying to help to mitigate this deficit. I, I understand that we are presented with a challenge of how far does this need to go? My hope in the coming into here this evening was the direction that it was going to go was to get this mill rate, I have heard the mill rate is a focus of concern. To do what other towns and communities have done, which is to bring that to an area where perhaps it might gain some traction with the community. Bringing it under, uh, bringing it under a forty mil, that would give an opportunity for at least to be heard. With that being the case, the reductions themselves are significant. As Mr. Spagnuelli has just noted, my calculations are that this is overall a one point five million dollar reduction to the district. Since the initial proposal was given to the Board of Finance. We had shared already what those seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars reductions would be. Those were articulated to the community. And now to go back and have to look at this as an additional eight hundred thousand dollars. I won't make the mistake again to say how many it will happen. Right now, as it stands, to get to the seven hundred and thirty thousand, there are eight members of the faculty and staff of this district that have been reduced as a result of it. We have also had incorporated other elements of reductions within that budget to make it happen. What's not seen on there is that there's also really what would have been a ninth person, and that was a custodial position. So when I said to everybody in the past, how many would that be, I had said ten. Uh, or higher, but we were at nine with other things that were done to get to that point. With that being the case, that. Custodial position is based on what we have for now doing contracted services. As well as, uh, overtime hours that I had identified an area that we might be able to mitigate that expense to be able to address this. As you all have heard, and I recognize and appreciate everybody who has spoken. Is the realities that we are in a service industry, our role is to meet the needs of our students and do the best that we possibly can do. We understand we're under challenges, I don't necessarily believe that the reason why this budget failed is exclusive to where the Board of Education is situated. I do recognize and appreciate the comments that there has been overspending, and that has got to stop in this community. I recognize that, and I am committed, as I have talked with the town manager and the leadership, to help make a difference in that regard. But we can't continue to identify areas of where we now are bringing this budget into such close. Uh, elements of, can you even make this work? As far as where the state is concerned, I think the broader picture is what's factoring into this. I met with union leadership today, one of my union leadership stewards who represents, there have been over fifty percent of the districts that they work in that did not pass this year. So we are not the only community that is faced with this, and unfortunately, I think it's a broader picture, it's the state of the economy. It's the concerns about whether or not we should be doing more with less. And obviously, uh, it's in recognitions of the fact that. Everybody is concerned as to where they are financially and whether, uh, there is a cost of living affordability to everybody, I appreciate that, I respect that. But I don't want to lose side, lose sight of what's most important, and that is meeting the needs of our children, and it is very challenging to do. Our service model right now, just to get to the seven hundred and thirty is going to have a significant impact on this district. I've shared where those staffing levels are. To get to another eight hundred thousand is the equivalency or close thereof, probably more. Because of the fact of where those reductions are being placed. So when we're saying that there could be upwards of now fifteen or plus faculty and staff members, plus other mitigating factors. It is absolutely significant, and there is, this is a way, and unfortunately, the way this works is that. It will change the face of public education. I will be truthful with everybody, and I know, and this is to everybody who. Uh, I know has been supportive of education, I believe this community as a whole. I believe everybody understands the value of education, I think we're struggling to figure out, how are we going to finance our public schools? Unfortunately, we are left to try to begin to figure this out, but I am so concerned. That our public education that we are offering our students is not going to look in the future what it has looked. To the students who have most recently been a part of this. Have we been a part of a problem? I agree with you, I think we have expanded into areas, but in doing so, you create opportunities. And then to walk back those opportunities, those opportunities were created because of expectations that our families have had with us. But also wanting to create the most competitive and challenging opportunities for our students in our school districts. Our school, regardless of what's online, has performed, been performing at an extremely high level, I couldn't be any more proud of this school district and the students and the faculty and staff. What they're doing, but the one point five, uh, million dollar of a reduction to me. Uh, I just don't, in this moment, I'm struggling with it for you all, I don't think you need to be there on this, I understand that is not my call. But I am so concerned, uh, with the reductions of potentially fifteen faculty and staff members in the school district plus. Uh, whatever additional elements, well, I am trying to bring down this deficit in this community, I am working towards that. You all know that I am working towards that, I couldn't have been any more transparent about the budget through the deliberations process with everybody. You sat with us during collective bargaining, Mr. Radovich, you were a part of all of those conversations that we had, you saw my strategies and the ways in which we went about this. Uh, and I know that the Board of Education is as committed as they ever have, they want to see that this deficit is reduced. And that we further, you know, we further review everything that we had, your staffing report told an awful lot, I know it's been something that you have been raised. And it is something that we certainly we need to address, and with that, uh, I just would ask once again, take a look at where this is going to get to the mill rate and give it a chance. At a higher, I understand to put it below forty, but this is just an absolutely huge number for the school district to have to, uh, to attack to endure.
This is kind of simple. We kind of knew what happened at the, or the, what do you call that, the recent budget. And you. Indicated that you knew about the forty, the mill rate forty being a thing. So I'm going to presume that you already looked at the, the numbers to achieve that before you came into the room.
Yes.
Okay. What is that going to be in a, a two minute, you don't have to.
I am not, I am, I, I appreciate that comment, but I honestly would defer that to the Finance Department for the town because of the realities that I don't. What I perceived it to be was not that number to get it below forty, I did not perceive that we needed over one point five million dollars. To be able to get to that point, never mind the other reductions, but I.
Walked into the room, you had. Kind of didn't have any like little plan, knowing that it's going to get cut and the impact.
We came into, I came into this room recognizing that there was going to be reductions, absolutely, and I believe that the taxpayers have stated that, so. Uh, in preparation for that, I had anticipated that there was going to be reductions. I had anticipated that there was going to be reductions, my hope would be that it wasn't going to be any more than two hundred and fifty thousand. But recognizing that perhaps this might be a four hundred thousand dollar reduction. Now knowing that that number is doubled, that's significant for me, but I just did not anticipate in the bigger picture that getting below forty mills. Was going to result in a one point five million dollar overall reduction to the Board of Ed.
AJ?
I, thank you for the commentary. With the proposed reduction, what, you said it brings the mill rate under forty, what, what is the actual mill rate associated with this reduction?
Jeff?
Yeah, per, I personally want to make a clarification on revenue, I, I did. Adjust to revenue figures, uh, from the state budget that was just approved the other day. So, um, we had a lower amount, what we did for ECS. Budget revised the amount, so that increased. Our estimates by, uh, just over ninety seven thousand dollars. And we're getting some increased funding in our town aid road grant. And that's about a hundred and eight thousand dollars, so roughly two hundred and five thousand dollars overall. Getting added to revenue, which obviously has an impact if we got down bill. So, factoring that two hundred and five thousand dollars. The mill rate, uh, comes out to thirty nine point seven one. Which is a one point six seven mil increase. And as a percent, that's four point three nine percent.
So there's room here, we didn't have to go this low. Why did we decide to go as low as we did? If the goal was to get under forty, that's what we've heard. Now, I understand, yes, there was also three percent.
Too much under, I mean, let's not get fixated on that. We had the voters come out. In record numbers, you can't, I mean, we gave five percent, and there's no, there's.
I'm not fixated on the mill rate, I'll be honest with you, I'm just trying to understand where you guys are coming from. What I'm fixated on is how many people that's going to cost us out of the education system, that's a huge number. And that's going to be a big impact, we don't know what the impact is yet, we still need to go understand that. And I think we're in a position where we need some feedback from. The Board of Ed at this number, which they have not yet considered. And understand what that means for an average class sizes. How the ratios are going to move around, yes, I see the numbers they've gone down from an enrollment perspective.
Did anyone, the, the, the citizens? You know, as these, as. We voted on the previous budget. Uh. How is this going to affect your families? Yeah, because. We have to keep that in mind, it's not just the Board of Ed, that, that's seventeen hundred students in town.
And the, and the families that support them.
And the families that support them, who pay taxes.
Absolutely.
And all the seniors in town, seniors are what, twenty percent of, uh, of the town? And there, they didn't get. They didn't get five percent, they got two point five. And so to ask them to shovel out the money year after year, and that, you know, these increases in the Board of Ed budget, they never go away. They're, they're, so we had a, whatever we had last year, we, we have, that's on top of this year, on top of next year, it goes on and on and on. And at some point. We feel that. Some, there has to be some rethinking here. And, and that's, that's where we're coming from, we want to look out for the, for the town, but yet we want to. Supply the, uh, Board of Ed with finances, we want them to rethink the way they do business. Like, like the finance director position, you know, Karen was, I'm not going to say the number, paid a lot of money. And maybe some of that money can be redirected. There, there was a, there was a security grant that was, uh, you had mentioned you might get. And that's. Another piece of money, so there's, there's, there's money out there, and Jeff just, just said that, um. Grants from the, the state. Are coming in, the information about them, so. It's, uh, I think it's time we think of someone else beside the, 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 um, school system. And. And how, um, and in our allocating our finances. And, and also too, we. You're looking at me with great disgust. That, that, that the nineteen thousand, the nineteen million. Supports everything in town. And that includes money, more money for the Board of Ed. And I think that's something that the publics are really not aware of, I mean. You know, I have seen in capital where they're looking for seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. That's not in the operating budget, so people think, oh, it's just the operating budget. No, there's more money over here. Their example is the reading program we pay for. Um, so it's, it's not like we're really shorting the Board of Ed. But we have to support, when you look at the town budget, nineteen million dollars, services. Thirteen thousand residents. They, they're, they're kind of getting the short end of the deal here.
There's, oh, by that number thirteen thousand residents and seventeen hundred students, that's almost fifteen percent of the population, they can't even voice their opinion.
Their parents can, and their parents came out and voted.
I understand they voted.
Yeah.
And they said, yep, five percent was too much, I'm saying two point seven five is not enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying five percent was the right number. They've started looking at impacts, not down as low as you guys have cut, they've started looking at impacts. That has. A big ripple effect on what it means for education in this town and the families who are looking to come here to support this town. Because of where education runs.
Business, which for the five percent, uh, you didn't think the five percent was enough.
Right, that's true. I, I understand.
You actually came. With the exact number that, um, a Board of Ed, a Board of Ed member had. So it wasn't that you plowed through the numbers, it was. This person said, yeah, just one percent.
That's true, I, I had come to my own number.
Yeah.
AJ, it would have been nice if some of this had been addressed over the years. But when we brought it up, when we brought up an enrollment decline, we've had Board of Ed members call us liars. And the facts are right there, they denied it, they hid it. And it's, it's come.
Make it, make it clear, not Superintendent Van Ten. No.
No, no, he's caught in a hard place now, because the citizens in the house are catching up now. I, I sympathize with his position, he's, he's in a tough place, he's doing a wonderful job. But. It, it's, the town has, has to rectify the situation at this point.
Okay, that, that, I mean, I hear you guys are out, you're not going to move, I.
No.
So.
I, I, a quick question, did you guys talk about this? Two point seven five number before this meeting? Because if you recall the.
We are allowed to caucus.
Yeah, I know, no, for the clerk, because it's just like the, our last one, we did it, you guys are, I realize you could caucus. But you did your caucus, you came up with your numbers, and then we sit in front of the public. And I had no idea what your numbers were, how you got to them the last.
Well, it's not like you came to the table with numbers. No, you, you're not coming to the table.
My question before is, well, so you guys already discussed it, but the point, what I got is a made earlier, I don't know the impact of this. And you're coming up, you guys decided amongst yourself that it's going to be two.
As Democrats have done previously, yes.
Okay, no, I'm not saying it's, I'm just saying, so when the public's looking at it. The Republicans. Decided on this number themselves without our input, because.
We've done our homework, yes.
Okay, so just so we know, so when we go forward, if you guys hold the vote. And, because I have no idea the impact of this, so until I understand the impact.
I think, I can, he just explained what the impact it will be. And I, and I, he can give you the names or the programs.
And I, and I think he can give you the names or the programs or are they going to cut back on their, um, their printing?
But David Hox, well, I thank you again for your, your documentation. I had a clear understanding what his suggestion was and we all went along with it.
Well, in, in the town budget, it's, it's a lot, a lot simpler because everything is line item. We don't deal with line items.
Correct. Madam Chairman, can I call the vote?
Yeah, I'll move the question.
Move the question.
What's that?
Move the question. In other words, let's move on.
Okay, you're right, we're just spinning. I had to say it, sorry.
I know.
Very good.
Okay. We have a vote?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Actually, I stand right there. I abstain because I have no idea what I'm fully done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, public, public remarks. Again, three minutes, state your name, your address. Um, try and keep it to three minutes and we'll let it go for just thirty minutes.
Karen One at Long Crossing Road, I am speaking on behalf of myself. You just made the decision for me. My daughter will be going out of district in the fall, so thank you very much.
Uh, Brent Sanderson, fifty South Main Street. That was a disgusting display of callousness, cruelty. And selfishness, frankly, uh, what I saw was terrible. Um, and I just, I, I think it was a horrible thing to do. Um, we talked about the morale of police officers having new weapons, the morale of butts on shiny seats. The morale of, uh, taxpayers, and we never mentioned the morale of teachers or students in town. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Clara Seigun, twenty six Edgerton Street. I want to start by saying that my grandfather was raised here, my mother was raised here and her siblings. And I was raised here with my siblings. And as someone who is in this school system, I know the impact that a teacher can make on everyone. And I wanted to say firsthand that since I know most of the people in this room by name. I can say that the people that have voted against or, uh, that have voted for budget cuts. Are all people who do not have children in the school system. People that came up here and spoke tonight and voted for budget cuts. Do not have children in our school system. And the people who spoke for the school system. Sorry that I'm so spastic because I thought of this in my head beforehand. The people who voted, um. The people who are up here speaking for education are students and teachers. Teachers that live here and pay taxpayer dollars. And are able to understand the importance of education and students who have parents who are backing them, who pay taxpayer dollars. And understand the importance of education both. I'm extremely disappointed to see that there are parents here that I grew up with, that no longer have students in our school system. That are, that are ignoring the importance of our education and ignoring the vote and, um. So I need to write this out, maybe perhaps at another meeting because I have a lot to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say one of my favorite quotes, that education is not the preparation for life, but life itself. And I feel that it's extremely important that we as a town can show the children in memorial and center schools that are. Going to be staying here or the families who just moved here, that education is a priority. And this was a rather unfortunate decision. And, uh, as the class president for our senior year. It is my responsibility to make sure that the people who voted me here, as the people who voted you here. Can rely on me to fulfill the, to give them the same opportunities that were given. Us and given the senior classes before us, and I don't know how that's going to work out anymore. So I'm very sorry this decision was made. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophia Johnson and I live on Lakewood Road. And I think the only quote that I, because I didn't really write anything out. Is the only thing more expensive than education is ignorance. And I think that's the only thing I can say to describe this meeting.
Hi, um, Juliana Sincigalli, fifty three one and a half. Um. I'm really sorry about how the budget turned out, but I just think it's not right to ignore all of the people in town who are coming in with kids. Freshman class is going to have so much higher enrollment. And people who are leaving are still voting to keep the budget in. People who don't, don't have kids, as Clara said. And, sorry. And I think you guys are ignoring because I'm going to assume your kids are out of the education system. But if you think of like the grandchildren and the people who are. Growing up and learning how to be proper people in the community who are allowed to vote. And I think you guys are taking away. Their education to know what is happening. Thank you.
I just would like you to see the face of one of the teachers affected by the cuts that have already happened because I've lost my job at the high school and I'm now going back to the middle school. And because of this, I will no longer be the drama director at the high school. There will be no fall play for which we just won the Halo Award. Um, for the best play in Connecticut. So I just want you to understand that this is the tip of the iceberg of the things we'll be losing in our schools. The fact that you were not willing to compromise and talk to the people on the end of this panel. Who were pushing to understand where you came up with two point seven five is just inconscionable. I do not understand it. I am so sad for my students who are here. I'm so sad for all of our schools. That was a ridiculous display.
Um, I just want to make sure I was listening right. I just jawed something down when I was listening, um, and I heard the statistics seventy. Or around seven hundred and seventy five thousand on roads. I don't know if that was right or wrong, and I'm not necessarily saying that like we shouldn't do roads or stuff because I don't know how that all works. But that is like around nine teachers. So just in principle, I think it's possible to look elsewhere.
Anyone else?
Yes, folks out there.
Any online?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, this is, uh, Derek Johnson. Can you everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, I live at thirty six Lakewood Road. Uh, my apologies, I wasn't here for the entire meeting. And only had a chance to listen to the deliberations. Um. I, I find these cuts, um, to be unreasonable, um, unthoughtful. And really reflect a lack of financial, I think, understanding. Now, I don't know if as part of these deliberations, there is an analysis of the real costs. That have taken place. The inflation rate since January, um, twenty twenty one to today is twenty one percent. The increase in the town budget prior to the cuts was twenty point four percent over that same period. On the education side, the increase from the academic year twenty twenty one to today was nineteen point seven percent. In real terms, the real expenditures that this town has made for education has declined. The cuts that you are proposing, okay, are devastating. And will result in a real decline in expenditures over these last five years. In real terms, the town of East Hampton is spending less on education today than it did five years ago. And the cuts that you are proposing are absolutely devastating. And they're done not with a surgeon's scalpel to minimize the impact. But rather with a chainsaw for some other agenda. The notion that student enrollment should drive these costs is again, is a false economic analysis. The number of students in an education in, in, in a department does not alter the marginal cost of providing those services. Enormous amount of the overall cost structure is what we would call the fixed cost. That would include teacher salaries in this context and the like. So alterations in the number of students from twenty one to nineteen to eighteen and the like isn't going to affect. Okay, um, the overall cost structures. But what it would do and what you're ignoring is it would enhance the level of education that our town is providing. I would expect a lot more from a board of finance. To be able to think through the appropriate trade offs. And the real costs of education over these last five years. It is shocking. Possibly with respect to the money saved, you all can go back to school yourself. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you.
I know at town council, they don't allow that. I know at town council, they don't allow that. She's saying she'll give your, remember her three minutes.
No, no, we need, we need to just keep this moving and hearing other people's views and opinions. And we do have someone online.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Uh, Jordan Warner, uh, Oak Mill Road, uh, speaking as a citizen, not a member of the council. Um, once again, the Board of Finance came together with a preset number, uh, and an agenda with no intention to hear in good faith from anyone. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Uh, it's been suggested again that the Board of Education for the last several years has been acting with some level of incompetence. And that completely ignores the fact that state reductions in cost sharing for things like special education. Have not kept up with the rising costs. That's where those deficits come from, not from, uh, from poor planning or badly executed budgeting. It's suggested that this is a way to send a message to the state. How does this send a message to the state? The state needs to hear from us through letters and phone calls, not just receive the voting results. Our reps need to have our backs and they do not. And in the meantime, the only group in town that cannot vote on their own behalf. Is being forced to bear the brunt of the community's failure to demand better from our state reps. The deficits are not poor planning. They are the, the, the direct result of state failures and this body's insistence. That only, no expenses, expenses can be budgeted for. You continue to act in bad faith and with malice for our young people and it, and you push misinformation willfully. The actions of this body make East Hampton suffer. If you want to save money, we should be increasing staffing to prevent out placements and keep our kids in district. Not cut teachers and programs and send them to magnet schools that we have to pay for. This decision by the, by this board is an illogical and poorly intentioned act that will only make the deficits worse. Thank you.
I also, Rick Wonnet, thirty five Long Crossing Road. I also find the cuts unreasonable considering you all who approved this budget also approved the last budget. So I would assume you will also go to the River East and say once again, you cannot afford the costs. And to vote down the budgets that you yourselves put together. Thank you very much.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Rebecca Harvey, thirty nine Flanders Road. Um. I'm kind of shocked at what I'm listening to because the voters made it abundantly clear. That they could not afford what was proposed. I want to say thank you for taking into consideration the other eighty percent of residents here in East Hampton. I think that with the vote being on Tuesday and if you all had time to caucus and deliberate and figure out some numbers. That the rest of the, uh, Board of Finance should have done the same. And, um, made it a point to get together with you guys to discuss this. Um, there are absolutely plenty of parents in this town with children still in the school system that voted against this budget, and I know that for a fact. And the reason they did that is because it was more important for them to keep a roof over their children's head than to actually. Vote for something that they can't handle. Um, I am kind of appalled that. There are even children getting up here and basically reprimanding you for doing your job that you were voted into doing. It's kind of, um. It's kind of disheartening and, um, I just want to say thank you and, um. To be honest with you, I wish it was lower because with these reassessments coming in. We're all going to be getting hit and we don't want to be one of those towns that was a thirty percent increase on our taxes. So thank you. I know it was a difficult decision. I know that a lot of people are not happy, but there's a big picture here and as the children get out of school. And learn how all these things work, they're going to become educated on it and understand that this is not an attack on teachers. Or children or anybody else. It is business and it is money and that is how a town is run. And thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
Well, Melissa has her hand up. She is muted.
We, we, we were back. Filling in. That appears to be.
Is that it? Is that everyone?
Hello, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I was unmuted. Um, Melissa Engels, seven Markham Road. I would like to applaud. The Board of Finance for doing a very, very difficult thing. Um, you listened to the voters. And for the first time in as long as I've been involved, you had a referendum that soundly, soundly defeated your budget. Wasn't even close. And, uh, yes, there were parents that I know of. With children in the school system who said no. Um, your superintendent just admitted to probably some errors in the past of overspending. At least I think that's what he was alluding to. Uh, and I would have to agree. I've had seventeen or eighteen nieces, nephews go through your school system. I have been a substitute teacher there many years ago. It's a great school system, totally agree. However. Given the fact that the state does not let us ever lower our Board of Education budget, we have to be very careful what we put in that budget and that has not been done to this date. It's not just a question, as Derek Johnson mentioned, of inflation. It's a question of what people are getting for raises and what they can afford. And we can educate our children to the hilt, but if they can't afford to then stay in East Hampton or live in East Hampton because they can't afford it. What good is that to us as benefiting our community as a whole? Same with our seniors. I've had people bash seniors. Well, guess what? We need our seniors. Our seniors deserve. Some of the programs that we've not been able to afford. And you're absolutely right, LaLana. There are other people. In the town besides students and we've neglected that for a very long time. So I applaud your efforts tonight. I think you all did a great job. You're in a very tough spot. Uh, but I think the voters are going to appreciate what you've done. I certainly do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, Sydney Vasino, thirty five Tarragon Drive. And I just wanted to say on, I think behalf of me and my peers that. Us coming up here wasn't in a way to be disrespectful towards you, but we don't have a chance to vote in, um. On this budget cut that directly affects. on this budget cut that directly affects us, our education and our teachers and honestly, our future. So us coming up here is to try and use us, use our voice and stand up for what we believe in, like we are taught in school. Um, and so I think us coming up here is based off of just disappointment that our efforts um weren't working and um that we're just disappointed in how this went and how it was um dealt with.
Oh, can I say something?
Yeah. I I didn't take any of your comments for uh as disrespectful.
I would have to agree.
Yeah, I thought you were very well spoken and uh and brave.
Yes, and brave.
So thank, thank you.
Some of you were very, very nervous and takes a lot of guts to get up like this. But we applaud you.
I thought they were much more respectful than some of the other adult comments that we've heard tonight. So again, thank you for your comments.
Yes.
Anyone else? All the comments.
I know I was already up here, but I just wanted to point out that a lot of us can't vote because we're almost eighteen. So we want to talk like Sid said, and we can't do it because I know a lot of people. The inflation is going up, but I still think you should consider the education budget because a lot of us don't have a voice until next year or the year prior, which is the budget's just going to get worse. So, yeah.
Anyone else? Going once? Twice? Nobody online?
Motion to return?
Yes.
A second.
All in favor?